Okay, I think we're ready, John.
All right, and we're on, everybody's on TV.
You have sound there too?
I do, yes.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay. So we're gonna call the public hearing for Monday, December 7th, 2020 to order. If you would please call the roll, Ms. Sensky.
Sure, Mr. Roskowitz?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Here.
Mrs. Fogleo?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Haynes?
I'm here.
Mr. Timmaner?
Here.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
And our visitor today is Mr. Bendis, owner of Lake City Plating LLC.
Here.
So tonight, we are getting, we are having a public hearing to discuss the rezoning of four parcels of property located on the east side of Lake Avenue. And we would like to re, or the, Lake City would like these rezoned from C1, general commercial to M1, which is light industrial. And this would be the purpose, the request is for the business expansion at Lake City Plating. And the, do I need to read the parcel numbers, do you think? Or, I don't know if they would mean anything to anybody. But Mr. Timmaner, this has already been to the planning commission?
Yes, that's correct. It has been recommended that council approve this rezoning from the planning commission. Just a little history on this, that entire stretch there used to be M1. And when the Pendleton property finally came down, we recognized that as you went further south on Lake Avenue past Lake City Plating, that, you know, we didn't obviously want that corner all the way up to the bridge to be a heavy industrial use. So we decided at that time, we wanted to just take that whole stretch and make it C1. We had all the public hearings and all that back then. There were no objections at that time. And so we then rezoned it to C1. Lake City Plating already being there, they're grandfathered in to operate as they are. As Lake City Plating has evolved since back then, since we did the zoning change, business has been booming for them, which we're extremely happy to see. You've seen that they have done some expansions on that east side of Lake Avenue. And now they're in a position where they want to build another warehouse onto the facility out towards the back of the property heading north on Lake Avenue and north of their property. So it makes sense now just to take their property itself and turn it back into M1. It does, but the railroad tracks, which is also M1 down, you know, as you go down the hill there behind their facility. So it is contiguous to another M1 parcel. And we don't, we don't see that there's any issue with that. Most of you have seen, they have begun clearing land even further north of Lake City Plating. We are not suggesting or, and it's not been the ask of Lake City Plating to rezone that into heavy industrial, so that will stay C1 commercial. And parking, which the Lake City Plating intends on putting on that property, is a permissible use for that, for that land. So it's our recommendation that council does approve the rezoning of the property.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Timmaner. That, where they're clearing that land at one time, and I think you mentioned, I'm old enough to remember, there was a machine shop there, a small building. I can't think of who ran, but there was a machine, little machine shop there. And it was torn down. So I imagine there's probably a cement pad somewhere in there. What about the, I don't want to call it a junkyard, but what next door, right south of Lake City Plating, what is that zone?
So that is actually zone C1. And again, it was, that was grandfathered in. At the time, we had heard there could have possibly been expansion plans for that, going north towards, going south towards the bridge. And that was one of the other reasons that we wanted to rezone that to C1, so that that scrapyard didn't go all the way to the bridge.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was C1 also. Mr. Bendis?
Bendis, yes.
Bendis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Do you have anything you'd like to share with us? Oh, I see D, there is a D. Do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening, or?
No, I don't think I have anything else that hasn't been shared. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Todd, if you know, Mr. Bendis, if you don't mind me, just I'm out here. So some of the details we shared the other day, are they okay to be disclosed? Kind of your future plans there?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. These are things that, would you like me to talk a little bit about it? No, absolutely. Yeah, right, we are considering an expansion, as Jim mentioned, to the north of our facility, basically on the hill, directly north of us. We're looking to possibly add 30,000 to 40,000 square feet. That would be our expanded warehouse. And that was, that's the emphasis of this request happening right now. We've grown pretty tremendously over the last about 20 years. I have been involved as the CEO and a partner for the last seven. And we're at the point that if we want to continue to serve new markets and grow and add new associates to our team, we really need to add, add to our facility.
A 30,000, is that like 100 by a 300 square foot building? Or what would, that's pretty good size, isn't it?
Yeah, it's really good size. We've had an architect draw it up. We're just looking, we're hopefully gonna see a more refined sketch here in the next few days. And then, you know, and then start understanding the, you know, financial ramifications, investment required to do it. But it would be, yeah, pretty, pretty good sized facility up there.
And you have room back there to do?
We do, yeah. That was the initial, the initial sketch was to validate that we have room, and the initial sketch was positive. Now we're going to the next step of really have a more detailed drawing and then start to get costs with it.
Are there questions, the comments from any other counselors? I do believe we have some, in this age of Zoom, you know, this would have been a public meeting held in our council chambers. So in this age of Zoom, I believe we do have some letters or comments. Ms. Sensky would share, unless any other counselor at any, would like to add anything at this time? Okay, Ms. Sensky then, go ahead.
Okay. From Catherine Anne Rapous, the question is, as Lake City Plating makes plans to expand, has the city collected all existing fines and penalties leveled by the EPA for past pollution violations?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So I was made aware of this question earlier on today. I did ask Craig Pierce from the wastewater treatment plant if we had anything outstanding. He does not believe we do. And it's been quite a long time since we've had any types of violations coming out of Lake City Plating. If you all recall, one of their last major infrastructure investments there was a pre-treatment facility. And since they have done that, and some of the staff that they've brought in, Lake City Plating has been wonderful to work with. And we do regular inspections of Lake City Plating, as I'm sure Todd can attest to. And we have had no issues, and if we have found any issues, they've been very, very quick to resolve those. It's also worth noting, as I asked Craig, nothing that we did find in those past violations ever caused our plant to violate our discharge into the lake. So because we have the monitoring over Lake City Plating, and then of course, the EPA has the monitoring over us, that is the win-win for the community that there's that many levels. That is also, again, I'll stress, why I was adamant about Petman discharging to the city's facility, so we can test them in the same way and alleviate everybody's concerns with their own discharge. As far as what is from the Ohio EPA, I don't know of any, I'm not made aware of any violations that exist on that level.
There are none.
Thank you. Ms. Sensky, there was a other couple, two other comments?
Yes, from Barbara Gabanier. If Lake City Plating expands operations, will all its, will the entire facility be subject to current EPA standards?
It's my understanding that not only current, but anything that changes in the future, they'll have to comply with. Not to mention, this is mostly a warehouse. I don't think we're talking about any new lines right now. So all of the same treatment is gonna happen as it, you know, as it has been happening now.
I received just a phone call from Mr. Ron Keister, and he wanted to let council know of his 100% support of, 100% support of Lake City Plating's project. And he said that Todd and the business are good neighbors of his and good people to work with. And he doesn't want to lose a vital industry to the city. So he again says he's 100% in favor of this. The last email had several different questions, so I'll just go one at a time. It's from Justin Thompson. What steps is the city taking to ensure that Lake City Plating is disposing of their hazardous wastes properly, especially given their track record of environmental violations? I think that was answered sufficiently.
And I, again, I know people like to just throw out the history of this, but of course, no history was provided in that. And as I've said, there have been a couple of things where levels were a little bit over the limits of what we have in the industrial pre-treatment. Nothing significant, and Lake City Plating has made the adjustments necessary to correct anything that we've ever found. We continue to do sampling there all the time, and we'll continue to do those things going forward.
Will rezoning the area that these parcels are on raise or lower the amount of taxes that Lake City Plating will be required to pay?
The rezoning of the property should not affect the property value at all. What will affect the property value is the large investment of infrastructure they're gonna be putting on the property, and that will go up.
If Lake City Plating goes out of business or relocates elsewhere at some point in the future, how difficult would it be to rezone the area for commercial or residential development later?
It would be the same process we're going through right now, so not difficult at all.
That's all I had from the public today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sensky. Mr. Timmaner, thank you. So are there any other, I'm sorry?
Just one, one following note. I know most of you know, and I believe it's even on the agenda for tonight, the application I'm submitting to OPWC for repaving of Lake Avenue. We're gonna be working with Lake City Plating as well there, and may even be able to go after some additional funding to put in possibly a dedicated turn lane for Lake City Plating into their property. So that's another plus that's coming out of this. Plus, we'll be eligible for some economic development monies to make that happen. So we're gonna be working with Todd and his engineers there to see if we can come up with a, with a plan for that as we get that road paved. So another, another plus for us.
Council, any questions, comments? Quiet group tonight. Mr. Bendis, do you have anything you'd like to leave us with? We won't, we will vote on this, it's on our agenda, Ms. Sensky, for later this evening?
Correct, correct. The legislative, it was on the agenda, addendum agenda, the legislation for this.
Okay. So it went to planning commission October 21st, and it came to us, and we recommend it, and now council will vote on it at our regular meeting this evening, Mr. Bendis. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, or?
No, I just, I appreciate you considering this. I know, you know, we work really hard to be a good citizen in this community and keep growing, and I appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just while we have you on the air, how many employees do you have at your?
We have 120 people now.
120 people?
Yeah, yeah, we've moved from, when I came seven years ago, we, I was employee number 60, and now we're up to 120. So I'm pretty, pretty excited about that.
Well, seeing, hearing no other counselor with questions, we will adjourn this meeting, and it will appear at our agenda later. Any questions?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Bendis, for coming. I will adjourn the meeting then.
Number seven, twenty twenty, six o'clock budget hearing to order. Ms. Senski, will you call the roll?
Mr. Roskovic.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mrs. Fodlio.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Timmanier.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
And we have, we are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law in their amended form. The public hearing this evening for the purpose of, let me see the exact purpose is, I know it's for our budget hearing, I want to see how it's exactly worded. With anybody in the public who would like to submit questions, comments, concerns to our finance director, or they could do that by email until two P M. of today, but this is basically a public hearing for our amended budget. Okay? So, Ms. Welch, would you like to take over?
Actually, I think Jim's going to, it's his budget, I just prepare it, so I'm gonna let him do most of the talking and then I'll fill in as needed.
All right, whoever would like to, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, just a, just a little bit of a correction, this isn't the amended budget, this is for the twenty twenty one fiscal year for the city of Ashtabula, so January one through December thirty first of twenty twenty one. First off, I do have to give a huge, huge thank you again to Tracy, Ms. Welsh putting to, helping me put together this budget. This is now, I believe, the fourth time we've done a budget this year because of all the different things that had happened. So, it, I, I will be very, very thrilled that we can take a little break, hopefully, after we get this thing passed at the next meeting before we have to start diving and making more adjustments as we go along. All in all, is, as you guys can see on page one, exhibit A of the bu, of the budgets, kind of that, the sheet that has all of our accounts on it, all the fund accounts on there, the general fund is always the one that we're most concerned with. And as you can see in there, we had a little over a one point three million dollar carryover for this year. That is a hundred percent related to the COVID funds that the city received. And if you recall, the city received right around one point eight million dollars in COVID relief funds that has to be expended by December thirty first. We're on track to do that because there is only a carryover of one point three million. Obviously, that means that our revenue estimates came in short and we deficit spent for twenty twenty by almost a half a million dollars. As you look at that budget, the top two lines we have for general fund are general fund for the city and then general fund, we break out the court there. As you can see, we are estimating an ending carryover at the end of twenty twenty one of seven hundred and ninety four thousand, three hundred and thirty seven, which means we will deficit spend again for twenty twenty one. So, the two columns that I always concern myself with and Tracy I know concerns herself with and I make sure department heads concern themselves with are the two middle columns that you have there. And as you see, we are estimating revenue of a little over nine point nine million, but we are, we are predicting expenditures of ten, a little over ten point four million. So, that's where I say we are deficit spending there. That is a direct relation to COVID. We are being very, very conservative on the revenues that we're receiving and, you know, we're, we're projecting some expenses related to COVID that, that we're gonna have to have, particularly in the health department and EMS. We obviously know that our health department is working literally twenty four seven. They are here on the weekends, we have contact tracers in the building now and right now, we don't see an end in sight for that. Put on top of that, the vaccine rollout and that we are going to be one of the providers of vaccine, so we will have to have our, our staff as well, ready to go to provide those vaccines to the public as they come in. So, this budget does not contain new hires for my side of the budget. It doesn't contain any, you know, wonderful expenditures that we would all expect in a ten point four million dollar, this is pretty much status quo, if not cutting things back and paring things back a little bit. But this is what we are predicting for two thousand and twenty one. And in all reality, in all the four budgets that we did, I have to really hand it to Tracy again and, and, and all the other people that went through this budget. We were pretty darn close on our estimates of lost revenue for twenty twenty, so I would just say without that COVID money that came in in the way that we were able to disperse it, if it wasn't for that, we would be in some really, really serious trouble, not only for this year, but going into next year. So, even though you see that big carryover, that to me doesn't mean anything, this going into twenty twenty two, I don't think it's gonna be, it's gonna take us a little while to come out of this, so I think it's a good cushion to have, but that doesn't mean that I'm going out there and hiring a bunch of people and doing a bunch of different odd things, at least on my side of the budget. We, we are staying status quo and, and gonna try to maintain because we honestly just don't know what the next couple of months are gonna look like, what that's gonna do to businesses, whether we're gonna lose more businesses, what it's gonna do to our revenues, so. Everything that's in here, besides negotiated wage increases that we had already agreed to long before we knew there was a pandemic, there is nothing else in the budget that's out of the ordinary, at least I'm, again, on my side of it. I keep saying my side of it because I truly, this time around, did not participate in any conversations other than being copied on emails with the courts. So, I leave the court's budgets to council.
Mr. and Mr. Timmanier, is, I, I, is there talk this week that there may be another relief bill passed in Congress? Would, would that affect this, is any of that money aimed for municipalities or how is that?
Well, from what I understand, the two sticking points on the federal level right now are stimulus checks to the citizens and that of funding to the local municipalities. Here again, you have one side of the aisle screaming that all that is is a bailout for broke cities, well, we had a healthy carryover coming into twenty twenty, if it wasn't for COVID, we would still have a healthy carryover going into twenty twenty one. But we certainly weren't broke and they certainly aren't bailing us out of anything and we could certainly use that money. So, if there is anything earmarked, hopefully this time around, it will be earmarked appropriately so that we are able to spend it where we need it. It's not done in a very limited, short timeframe like the last funds were. And, and that, in my opinion, probably won't get to us until twenty twenty one anyways. And then Ms. Welsh and I will be coming back to you with some type of amended budget to record that income if it does come in. Again, even if that income comes in, I don't plan on doing anything different than what we are doing right now as far as staffing or expenditures. We are gonna stick to what we have currently and, and, you know, wait it out until we're more stable to make some adjustments on that end. If anything, any new funds that come in will just offset any kind of reductions that we would need.
I, I mean, I know it's, I, I see it on the news, it's there. And, yeah, the twelve hundred dollar is a big sticking point, I don't see how it is, but it is in the city funds, but anyway. Counselors, any questions?
Yes. Kim, Kim just texted me that she can't get back into the meeting. I think we lost Kim.
Whoa. Stacy will try to get her back in.
Yeah, I see that she's not there, but I don't see her trying to get in either. Let me see what I can do.
Are there any questions from the other counselors about the budget? No? I, I think some of it, this, we discussed that finance in, in our personnel committee. You know, we have, we, you know, next year, we will hopefully have about eight hundred thousand to spend on paving. Mr. Timmanier, looking at this?
Yeah, that is correct. So, right now, my plan is, I believe it's about three hundred thousand that will go towards three or between three and four hundred thousand that would go towards Lake Avenue for our match to the grant. If you remember, that project is gonna be over eight hundred thousand dollars, so I'm trying to double our money there. And then the, the remainder of that will go towards the roads in the neighborhoods. I've, I've, right now, starting to put together that list and I'm starting with the ones that we did not hit that we were planning on doing last year until COVID hit and we scaled everything back. So, those will be the first to get bids on and then whatever increases in that we can do, we will do.
So, that, well, that's good news, we'll have that, more money for paving and Lake Avenue certainly is on everyone's mind.
Yeah, we, and again, that's, so that would be from the West Nineteenth, West Avenue, Lake Avenue intersection north to West Ninth Street. That would be that whole section in there. There's another grant, a safety grant that we're going after to do the southern portion from the other side of the bridge all the way to Route twenty, that is a very good grant, it's very competitive though, but they pay ninety percent and we're only responsible for ten percent. And that's a, that's a big cost going the other way as well. So, just trying to maximize that money, we can wait a little bit longer on the southern end of Lake Avenue, but that northern end can't wait any longer. I'm, I'll be amazed if we make it through the whole winter without significant issues on that portion of Lake Avenue.
You, you, you're talking Carpenter to Route twenty?
What? Yes.
Well, how much would that be? That gotta be a couple of million, dog.
I wanna say that was over one point five.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I, I wanna say it was about one point five.
That's a good stretch of road, yeah.
Very good. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Is she back in? I think she's trying to get back in.
Stacy, have you? I'm back in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was going back and forth looking at the budget and somehow got myself out, so.
Okay. So, are there any other questions or comments about the budget? No? We have, we, I see on the agenda will be a resolution of necessity for the park levy. And, and that money we will have this year. If the park levy that didn't, doesn't pass, then that money would disappear for next year's budget, or is that correct?
That would disappear for the twenty twenty two budget.
Twenty twenty two budget, okay, so we will have.
Next year's tax collection is based on two thousand twenty collection.
Okay, so we'll have the money for this year and, okay. And hopefully, you know, we'll get that money, we'll get that levy passed again. Levy's had a good thing in the November, so they had a good success rate.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I did have a question that somebody had emailed me and I talked to Tracy about it. Tracy, do you remember that question?
Are, are you talking about the health department?
Yes, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, I, if you notice, in, in the budget, usually the health department would, they're in the general, general fund typically and their middle three digits are one, two, six. Well, if you, you see, if you look at that, there's nothing budgeted on that line because they've been moved to two oh eight and the reason why they're moving to two oh eight, it's already an existing fund, but they are required to have a separate financial statement now and this makes it a lot easier to track what it needs to be tracked for them when it comes to doing our financial statements. So, they do have things budgeted for them, they're just in a different fund now.
Any other questions that were sent in, Ms. Senski?
No, that was it. Thank you, Ms. Welch.
All right, thank you. And I, I certainly don't want to bring up a sore subject, but in, in a town as small as ours, I, I would hope that next year at this time, a goal of ours would be that the city and the courts would have a better, I don't wanna say working relationship, I don't know what word to use, but I, I hope that there would be a better understanding between the city and the courts so that some of this stuff that's been going on the last couple of months would be avoided. I, I think we're all on the same page. We just might be reading it differently or something, but I, I guess that I don't wanna bring up a sore subject, but really, I think we can do better, both of us, so. I, I would just throw that out there. So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I had a conversation back earlier, I think it was last week, maybe the, I can't, my days run together anymore, but with Tanya and she's the clerk of courts over there and I think a lot, a lot of the, her and I have tried, we're going to try and work a little bit closer together, so when it comes to her trying to send over journal entries for the judge, that she communicates with me so that I know what her thoughts are and what she's trying to accomplish and to try and steer her towards her, you know, take, from taking the money from general fund. And I think they really understand that now and I know I've talked to her. Our, it's been an, an interesting conversation, let's just put it that way, but I think it's gonna be better because they know as long as they don't hit our general fund, things are gonna go a lot smoother for them, so.
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate that. And, and like I said, we have those finance personnel committees every month and they certainly are, it, we would so appreciate Tanya or someone coming and sitting with us and even if they're not on the agenda or a topic of discussion, just they come and, and appreciate what we, we're, we're, we're doing and, and we, communication would be enhanced, I feel, so. All right, any other questions? Well, I don't, see, a hearing on council is quiet tonight, they're pretty like, but thank you very much, Mr. Timmanier and Ms. Welch for preparing this seventy page document. We appreciate that, we know that's a lot of.
If there is any way for us to cut down on the amount of that we can print on, that, that would certainly help going forward as well. I know that Ms. Senski has looked at a bunch of different systems, you know, to maybe help with that, start moving electronically, but I mean, obviously, I think this packet is a hundred and thirty seven pages, if I'm not mistaken, so, you know, printing that all out for all of us was quite a chore on our copiers and papers, so I'd like to be able to go digital at some point.
Mr. President, he'll have to teach us how to do that because going back and forth trying to look at the budget, I took myself out of Zoom, so it's.
There's, there's some, there's some, there's some different systems out there that actually will scroll. There's there's some, there's some, there's some different systems out there that actually will scroll along.
Wonderful.
I don't want to get Miss Sensky too excited about. Just been on us quite a bit, but they're not they're not cheap, but they do they do help not only you guys as council. But the administration and the citizens follow along with meetings. If you ever watched the Asheville area city schools meetings, they do have one type of system like it. And it does, it it works well for them.
Well, that's good, but like I I'm I'm just, it's a lot of work preparing this budget and. And and that was my reference to seventy pages, so it's a lot going on there. People don't realize. But it and it is, it's a big document and it's a lot of work.
And and you know, like I said earlier, I I cannot thank our finance director enough. I mean, literally after you guys passed the last amended budget, number three. That next day we were working on twenty twenty-one, so it it probably what, October, we've been working on this? So you know, it it's it's not easy to throw all together and. And especially trying to predict what's going to happen. And so again, I I. She's been my rock this whole this whole time getting this done, so thanks again, Tracy.
Thank you, Jim.
And maybe we'll look forward to an addendum to the budget, maybe hopefully in January, February. The federal government will get their act together and we'll get another budget with a bunch of. More numbers on it. That would be good.
So just just keep in mind too, now this budget does sit there until you guys pass it for public display. We're, there's a chance that we can still tweak some things, you know, as we. Continue to close out the year and close out POs and realize projects that are not going to fully be expended by the end of the year. So when you guys pass the budget. We pray that it won't be any worse than than what it is today, but those numbers could change from the final one that you that you pass. It'll be minor, hopefully it'll be minor, but but it could change right up until the point where you guys pass it for twenty twenty-one. Yes.
So so if it if it comes to council tonight and it goes through and we pass it, then is it is it the ten days we have to? Or is it ten days before the end of the year?
Yeah, you're not, you're not actually passing it tonight. Yeah, now it sits there for the ten days now. Then you'll pass it at the next.
At the next meeting, okay. I could remember how that went.
Yeah, and that's where I said that that at that time, if if we do find any other irregularities or. Or like I said, projects that we don't complete or we need to hire twenty more contact tracers tomorrow. You know, those will be added to the budget and and will be adjusted before you pass it.
Okay.
The budget is available right now on the table in front of my office. So anytime any member of the public that's coming in can take a look at it. As long as we're open.
And we and we will get that online as well.
My door, my phone, everything is always open to all of you. If you have any questions. Feel free to get ahold of me. You know, I might not be be able to answer right that minute, but I can, I will get the answer for you. There's a lot of things that go into all of these numbers and, you know, right now it just looks like. Numbers, black and white. If you need more information that's behind that and what makes up those numbers, I could provide that for you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have about six or seven minutes and then we will begin our. Pre-council meeting at six thirty. And then our regular meeting at seven. And at seven o'clock, we will also have Ms. Hill, our. It's on now, so. Okay, we all set? All right, we are going to call again. Our pre-council meeting for Monday. December seventh, twenty twenty to order. This is council. Work session, our pre-council meeting. Do we need to call the roll again, Miss Sensky? We probably should to be official.
Okay, Mr. Roskovich.
Here again.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mrs. Foglio.
Here again.
Mrs. Crawford, Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Haynes.
Still here.
Mr. Timmaner.
I'm here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Okay, well, that's encouraging. We haven't lost anybody, so that's an encouraging sign. Okay, so we have our pre-council meeting. Tonight, we have some items that we'll be discussing. Just from the from my desk, the only things. At this time of year, usually council, it's not an election year, so we don't have to, you know, swear anybody in or anything of that nature. But if anybody is interested in changing their committee assignments. Although I know we just had some changes because of work schedules and. Other factors, but if anybody is interested in changing any kind of committee assignment or something, we can consider that at this time. Certainly, everybody on the committee is. Has gotten used to their role and is doing a good job, and sometimes we like that and we feel comfortable doing that, so. It's up to anybody, whatever else they feel in that fashion. And also. Ms. Sensky, in her efficient nature. Has supplied us with a list of council meetings for next year already. And so that's included. So if you want to look at that, there's all the council meetings are listed and all the committee meetings are listed. As they as they are scheduled at this time, assuming nothing changes, okay? So you can look at those. I've been on council six years. I don't think I've ever missed a meeting, but I if if we're ever allowed to travel again. I may miss a meeting next year because I'm going on a trip, but I don't know. Who knows? We might not be able to do that. We'll see. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring to council? No? Okay, Mr. Manager, you have some items you'd like to add or comment on this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have several ordinances to ask for tonight. First is a change order number one with severance construction. On our division pump place, pump station rehab. As we got into it, the forced main that goes down to the gravity fed sewer pretty much shot. So we we need to replace that with some modifications we did to the project and how it was starting to become under budget. Putting in the new line is about six hundred and fifty feet. It was a twenty-nine thousand dollar price tag. But again, by moving some things around and nonperforming some items and some work that went better than we thought it was going to. Our change order is for seven thousand eight oh eight sixty-five, so. I'll be asking for that. Again, that comes out of the Water Pollution Fund. We have to renew the contract with the County Public Defender for twenty twenty-one. That costs us twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars for the year. That is a general fund expense. We also have the, these are mostly just typical end of the year agree or beginning of the year agreements going into twenty twenty-one. So an ordinance to enter into agreement with the Asheville County Commissioners. For emergency management resources for two years or two-year contract is up with them. Thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. That is again a one-on-one general fund expense. As I mentioned earlier in one of our previous meetings. I'd like an ordinance to file an application and execute contracts for round thirty-five funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission. Will be using those funds to make capital improvements to that southern or I'm sorry, the northern. End of Lake Avenue from the Carpenter Road, West Avenue. And the Lake Avenue Bridge area north to West Ninth Street. As we had the public hearing for earlier, I would like an ordinance to approve zoning changes for four parcels of land located in the vicinity of Lake Avenue and West Seventeenth Street. From C one general commercial to M one light industrial. For those that missed that meeting, that is part of the Lake City Plating property. It is the Lake City Plating property. And lastly, we had some, what started out as about a forty-four hundred dollar repair. Turned into an estimate of twenty thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. For a Mack dump truck that we use at the water pollution plant. So I need to have an ordinance to enter into agreement with refuse equipment of Ashbula for making those repairs. We had some cracks in a cross member. Once they dove into it and got that cross member out. It revealed a whole bunch of other cracks in the truck that have to be repaired. So that's what that expense is going to cost us right now. That is all I have for ordinances. I believe this week was the last week for any, actually, it might have been last week was the last week for any leaf bag pickups. So that curbside is done. I think hopefully most of the leaves are all off the trees by now. We saw very little bags come in this weekend down at Public Works, so we'll be making sure that all those last bags are picked up. And you can always, again, drop those off at the Public Works building if there is any more left to pick up. The Planning Community Development Department doing code enforcement around the area. One thing that we have really been targeting the last probably two to three weeks has been junk vehicles. There's been an abundance of them out there. We're basically doing seventy-two hours and we're towing. And right now, our two guys, specifically Steve Lannum, who also serves as our. Animal Control Officer and Code Enforcement Officer, been towing a lot of cars lately, so if you get one of those notices. You know, before you get one of those notices, if you have a car, the vehicle that is pretty much abandoned, doesn't work on your property. Is not titled correctly or has current plates or is just a nuisance on your property. We've been getting a lot of calls on them and we're starting to remove them quickly, so please, hopefully you'll take care of it yourself before we have to. Mr. President, that's all I have for my report right now.
Thank you, Mr. Tim, and I'm and I'm glad to hear that. And I I think the important thing to know, it the car can be on your property. And it can be towed because it is is not, it's a nuisance.
That's correct, so you know, what we're finding though is a lot of, you know, cars stuck in people's backyards. You know, they're parked on the front lawns. You can't do that as well. The four tires are, they're in the driveway parked correctly, but the four tires are flat. They're inoperable. Car hasn't moved in years. The tags aren't current. All of those different things are a reason for us to consider that a junk vehicle and a nuisance and get rid of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. President? Mr. Timnier, with that with that in mind, I I brought to your attention about the Ashbrook property. And and has anything been done? I've been get still been getting calls and.
So we we have sent the certified there. Washing machine that was in the front yard was removed. And the junk vehicle that's on racks on the one side of the property, I believe. He is on that and that might be on our list of of vehicles to get.
Okay, thank you. And and another thing, the nets down at the tennis court, are are you going to be taking those down here soon? Because the wind is getting them and pulling pulling them off and I'm afraid they're going to get ripped.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we'll take those down this week.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Were any, was there any, were you able to put any stones in that one, those low spots on that one? West Fifteenth Street?
Yes, I believe they did go out there and make, I will double check with Mr. Melnick, but I know that order was sent to the Public Works Department. They've been around most of the end of last week after we plowed Tuesday and Wednesday and the beginning of this week, continuing the patch. And we'll be bringing on night shift. I believe it's next week, start a night shift. And as long as there's no snow, we'll be, we'll be doing the patching.
I didn't know you could do patch. I was just hoping for, because those are pretty noticeable.
Yeah.
Both, yeah. Thank you for that. Also, to council members also on there, Mr. Timmanier gave us this list of ordinances. There is an ordinance of necessity for the park levy that we will, we will be voting on tonight. Asking the county auditor to certify the the amount of taxes for the park levy. And there's a ordinance. Ms. Senski, maybe you want to mention this. There's an ordinance opposing Senate Bill 352 and House Bill 751. Or Ms. Welch, maybe one of you could help us. But council will be asked to vote on this. This is where the city, the city could lose tax, income tax money because so many people are working at home and, and such. Would anybody want to comment on that? I know we mentioned it at our last meeting two weeks ago.
Yes, this is just a, it's basically telling, saying the council is not wanting any, them to change.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I'm tired. It's opposing the fact that they want to change. Instead of taxing you where you work, they want to tax you where you live if you're working from home. And that would cause a huge issue to a lot of cities. So OML has, Ohio Municipal League has asked the other cities, all cities, to basically pass a resolution opposing this. So, you know, we rely on this tax money. We don't want to lose it.
And I, I tried to look those up, where they came from, how they originated, but you know, it's just. Yeah, so those items are also under our agenda. Okay, anything else? Council? Quiet group tonight. Mr. Franklin, do you have anything for council this evening?
I, I do. It's come to my attention, thank you, Mr. Timmanier and Mr. Crawford, that we, we need to do some corrections to the resolution of necessity for the parks levy. I used additional levy language in some places where I should have used renewal levy. I would, I will get a corrected first page to Stacy in the morning. But just to go through it, if you'll take a look at that resolution, which is page 22 of 45 of your packet. I'll, I'll go through the, the two or three places I, I would like to change by interlineation tonight. And again, I'll get a clean copy to the clerk of council tomorrow. But in the first line of the title, where it says a resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional, I would like to strike out levy an additional and put in the words renew a. So we'll read necessary to renew a one and a half mil tax. And on the, in the last line of the title, I would strike out the word additional and just leave the word tax. Then in the second whereas, where it says, in the third line, levy an additional tax. Again, I would like to strike that out and substitute the words renew a tax. And then finally, in section one, where it says council finds, determines, and declares that it is necessary to levy an additional, I would like to strike out levy an additional and put in the words renew and. And I think with those changes, it's cleaned up. It's much clearer. Technically, all these taxes we ask for are considered additional taxes. But obviously, using that language, if it should filter through to the ballot, would be very confusing to the voters. So I would like to make those changes by interlineation tonight before you vote and then submit the clean copy to Mrs. Senski tomorrow.
So, Mr. Franklin, do we need a motion to change the wording and then vote on the the ordinance or your term? That or what does it mean?
Yes, when this comes up.
Okay.
Either if you would recognize me or, or yield the floor to me for a moment, I will, I will request that council make a motion to make these changes by interlineation.
Okay. And then we're good to go. So we could still pass it with the changes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Franklin for working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anything else, Mr. Franklin, that you would have for us?
No, not this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Welch, do you have anything additional?
Mr. President, I just have the resolution, as you mentioned earlier, opposing the Senate bill. And then I also have a very large appropriate, you know, lots of changes as far as to this year's budget with appropriations, increases and decreases. So if I wanted to be able to answer any questions now, if you had any regarding that appropriation. If not, I will just formally request it at the.
Is that page 25 of our? 25 of our agenda? That is that your?
It is, yes. Yes, page 25.
Twenty-five through thirty-something. So those are your request changes.
Correct.
Then, then you have the reason listed as usual, so.
Right. And it's basically just changes, you know, tweaking us one way or another based on estimations for the end of the year. I'm just trying to get, you know, making the budget to where we know a better, having a better idea of what our carryover is going to be. This is probably, this is just one, and next, you'll probably have another one next time before we even pass the budget. It's just things. Expenses come up.
Yeah.
This is, this is nothing out of the ordinary either. This is typical year-end stuff that we do every year, so nothing that.
Soon as they get it finalized, something else happens, right, Jim?
Like the truck this morning, yeah.
Yep.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Welch. Ms. Senski, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do. If, in your pre-council packet, there's been one change to the December calendar. And that is the Port Authority meeting has been canceled. If any of the committee chairs want to, during, you know, the regular meeting or now to, you know, if they have any changes to their meetings, you can let me know, but that should be December for you, just minus the Port Authority meeting on the 16th. And as Mr. Roskovic said, I did add the 2021 council meeting schedule. Double check me, but I think everything should be accurate and I added in there the holidays. And we didn't really run up on any except for in pre-council and regular, and I did make those changes. And so those, those dates are on this 2021 council meeting schedule. Mr. Roskovic's asked if anybody wants to change anything. And, you know, next year, I did put on this meeting schedule, but next year, there will be an organizational meeting on December 6th at 6:30 following the pre-council meeting. It may or may not be new people. And we could talk again about changing any assignments and committees at that time, but it sounds like we can just pretty much do that at any time anyway. So just to ask you, you guys look that over and make sure that you want to continue to keep your meetings the way they are, or if you have any suggested changes. I know that virtual meetings are a little tougher in the early morning hours, Mr. Timmanier.
Yeah, I mean, even if we could push some of those back to 8:30, that would be helpful.
So if Ms. Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Spielman, if you want to think about maybe moving up to 8:30, if that wouldn't be too much of a problem for your schedules, if you decide to have a virtual meeting, same with in-person, Mr. Timmanier?
Once we go back live and we allow people back into the chambers and we don't have to stream everything out, it just takes a while to get everything set up. And I guess it also depends on whether or not I'm taking my child to school, because that puts a little bit of play on how I get here.
And that, that's all I had to point out. For anybody who did pick up a packet of all the meetings for tonight, there were a couple of changes that I noticed. One was, well, Mr. Crawford noticed that on the renewal language, and we discussed that and we'll talk about that again at the regular meeting. In the public hearing packet, I had used a July public hearing notice rather than a December hearing notice, but we worked through that as well. So I think unless there's any other questions about the actual agenda, I'm, I'm done.
All right, thank you, Ms. Senski. And, and the state legislature has extended our Zoom ability till, to June, is it?
Yes, June. My first.
July first? Okay, hopefully it, we won't have to do that, you know, that long. Hopefully, we'll be able someday to get back to you know, in-person meetings. I think it was a good, based on what we're seeing, I think it's a good thing we did go back to this. But let's hope that in the future, we, you know, we'll be back to our normal routine. But we do have this, this option available for us. Okay.
Yes, and I'm so thankful. There's a lot of, there's a lot of cities that never changed out of virtual. And I am glad that we did because it's nice to see everybody in the flesh. It really is. But now that numbers are changing again, I, I really would prefer not to see any of you in person, no offense, but I don't want anybody to have a, you know, I don't want anybody to get sick and and all that, so we'll keep it this way until we hear otherwise and we'll talk about it.
Miss, Mr. President? So I, I was intending to have my next meeting in person. Should I change that to Zoom? It's for tomorrow.
Going to ask about that, why we were meeting in person.
So the, I mean, you have what, two other people on your committee? Plus myself will be down there and Stacy. I mean, I, we can definitely spread out enough. If you want to go virtual, just let me know sooner than later and we'll get it scheduled and organized.
I, I just feel intimidated by running a Zoom meeting. I'll just be honest. It intimidates me.
Well, Ms. Haynes, you don't have to worry about running any of it. You just need to do the same thing you do at any meeting. Mr. Timmanier and I run the the hard part of the meetings.
I have, I have three computers going right now streaming out there, so we're good.
I'm, I'm, I'm open. I'm open either way. I, I like the in-person thing. I think it's a small group, but if people would prefer Zoom, I, I'm, I'm fine with either.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'd prefer to just stay virtual. We're doing everything else virtual, so I was actually just going to message you to ask if there was a specific reason why we were meeting in person and then doing everything else virtual. It just didn't make sense to me. So if, if we can.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm fine with that. If Stacy and, and Jim are fine with doing that, I'm fine with that. It's not going to be a long meeting.
We don't have any guests, do we?
Pardon me?
There's no guest, right?
No guests. It's just, it's just clearing up some things we started.
Yep, I, I just sent out the agenda just before we started these series of meetings. And I decided this go-around with the virtual meetings, I'm just going to keep the same meeting number and password so that there's no, it won't be so cumbersome. You have those numbers available. I mean, I'll keep sending them, of course, to you through email, but it's, it's the same number, so you won't have to worry too much, as much about that.
So that'll be Zoom tomorrow then, Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other counselor or committee chair have anything they want to add? Finance, personnel, public works, safety forces?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes.
For the Public Works, the committee decided at our last meeting to move and we are bringing out, want to, to full council, the modify the ordinance of 951.03, which is the rates, collections and disposal off of the suggestion of the city manager and his team. What we're looking at, would like everyone's approval is for wards three, four and five, currently they are allowed two 32-gallon waste cans. This will allow them to have three. So that will give them 96 gallons of trash per week, which will equal out what wards one and two get, which is a 64-gallon of trash and a bi-weekly of the recycling, which is 32 each week. So we're hoping that in doing this, it'll help with the trash being left around and it'll help those neighborhoods out in wards three, four and five. So, and the main meeting, I was going to ask to bring that out.
Okay, good, yeah. When, you'll have a.
Oh, go on.
Well, I was just gonna say, you'll give a committee report, Mr. Crawford, and then you'll bring it out then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Jane. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's what I hate about Zoom. That's why nobody talks, because nobody wants to interrupt anyone. I just want to thank the committee and Mr. Timmanier for their help on this. I, I really appreciate it. That's all I wanted to say.
Good, you're welcome, Jane.
Mr. President, just so, so we, we did make this recommendation and it, it's basically everywhere that doesn't have the curbside recycling. It does bring a little bit of parity to this, so it is either three 32-gallon containers or nine trash bags instead of six. You know, we're, we're seeing on average about three bags in a 32-gallon container, so that's why we did that. Obviously, we would very much prefer people had garbage cans rather than just putting bags on the road. I know that we have been lenient here and there. But if, you know, I would just say, if we're going to pass this, we're, we're going to stick to it, kind of like we were sticking to the other ordinance. So I just, just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that, that we're going to, you know, this is the modification. We're going to try it for a while. The other thing the committee was discussing, excuse me, was the pay per bag if we do a sticker. What I did suggest is let's try this for a little while, see if this helps alleviate some issues, and then we'll discuss that maybe when we get into March, April of next year. So I will work with Mr. Franklin to get this written up and the changes made into it for your next council meeting, and we'll implement it right after that.
Mr. President? Mr. Manager, will, will that also go for recycling, the stickers? Because you know, around Christmas time, it's extra wrapping paper and you don't want to throw it in the garbage. We'd like to recycle, but.
So what, what we have always said is if you have extra recycling, either use your own can or, you know, one of the drop-off areas you can, you can bring the recycling to, just don't bag it. It can't be in a bag when it comes to recycling. Those areas that do have curbside, if you are, which I am finding within my household now, I definitely could use a second can. We're providing those second cans free of charge if you're recycling. If you need more garbage, that's where it's an extra $10 a month. But obviously, we want people to recycle. One other thing that's going to be coming. One other thing that's going to be coming to you all, uh, at the next council meeting, I'm finalizing it right now with waste management. We have three contracts with waste management, one for municipal solid waste. One for our sludge disposal from the wastewater treatment plant. And one that is an agreement they make with us to, for us to receive their leach aid, the water that comes off of the. Uh, off of the landfill that's trucked to us and put into our uh, sanitary system and we charge for that, we make uh. It, it helps offset both the cost of garbage and our cost of sludge. Uh, waste management is looking at about a four percent increase each year for the next five years. So um, that contract will be coming to you uh, at the next council meeting, I hope to get it out to you before that. Um, but that's going to weigh into whether or not we want to do, uh, or are going to have to do rate increases. Uh, going forward, we did discuss that at the uh, committee meeting as well. Those are just the costs of doing business right now, but this is also the reason. That we try to stay within the limits that we have set, because you know, the garbage doesn't go away for free. Uh, there is a cost to it, so um. We'll, we'll make these adjustments, see if it helps, uh, and then we'll go from there. Uh, again. When you have those big items, those big bulky items and different things like that, you can always bring it to our transfer station. Uh, Mr. President, I know that you had a huge bulky item and. You were within the zero to fifty pounds and it cost you four bucks to get rid of it, so.
Four dough.
I don't, I don't want to hear the excuses that the transfer station is way too much to drive in the doors at. The landfill will cost you over fifty dollars just to drive in before you dump it. So um. For four bucks up to fifty pounds at our place, you're doing pretty good, and I think it's up to four hundred pounds is only thirty-two dollars, so um. That's a, that's a service we provide, and I know a lot of people take advantage of it. Um, but, but please use that instead of, like we saw this week, we got a report of mattresses being thrown in somebody's front yard. Uh, couches being left everywhere, tires being left everywhere, we take all that stuff. Uh, it, it's easy to do and it doesn't cost a lot of money to be responsible.
Yeah, and I will, I, I brought a mattress for, for dollars to get rid of it. If you throw that on the side of the road or something and get caught, you're looking at a six hundred dollar. Fine, so. Uh, yeah, so it, Mr. Timmanier is correct, four dollars, that, and I got a story to tell too, but I won't tell it here today, but anyway. So um, all right, anything else, then we'll go on to our regular meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for the viewers at home, can we know where that transfer station is and what their hours are, please?
Sure, the transfer station is on West Twenty-Fourth Street, uh, across the street from the hospital, it's on the same side as Hoffman's Pharmacy. Uh, all the way in the back, uh, the hours are seven o'clock to two forty-five, Monday through Friday, it is also open on the weekends. Uh, the rates uh, of everything are on our website, cityofashtibula.com, and you go into the sanitation department, you can find all that information there.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now. Go to our regular council meeting. And so I, I promised council, this would be the last time we take attendance tonight. Four times, so what we'll call the Monday regular council meeting, December seventh, twenty twenty. Uh, Pro Harbor Day, uh, for those of us old enough to uh. Remember our history, uh, uh, we'll call the meeting to order. We will stand for the uh, prayer and the pledge, and then Ms. Foglio will. Have, lead us in a moment of silence, so. Uh, can we, Ms. Foglio, will you lead us for prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today. And your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you and so begun, may through you reach its completion, amen.
Amen. Ms. Sen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States, States of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, I, you were cutting out, Ms. Senke. Thank you. And Ms. Foglio?
Yes, I, I'd like to have a moment of silence, please, for uh, city employee Donnie Rosetti. He was a police officer for the city of Ashbula for many years. And then he became bailiff for Ashbula Municipal Court for many years before his retirement. He served under the Honorable John Olson, Charles G. Hague, Hobart Shiflett and Albert S. Camples. He was a wonderful man, my coworker, friend and partner in crime, and he will be sadly missed.
Thank you, Ms. Foglio. Uh, Ms. Senske, would you call the roll one more time?
There'll be more times because we have to do every vote with roll call, remember?
All right, you're making me, you're making me, you're, you're correct, so, go ahead.
Ms. Haynes?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
I'm here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Here.
Mr. Roskovic?
Here.
Mr. Timmanier?
Here.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
Okay, we don't have to excuse anyone tonight, we have a quorum established. And like I said, we are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law as they now do stand. With us this evening, once again, uh, we are pleased. Uh, to have uh, Ms. Hill with us from our city health department. I think she's here with us, uh.
I'm here, can you hear me all right?
We can, Ms. Hill, thank you so much for coming. To uh, again, we look forward to the day when you don't come. Uh, but.
As, as do I. But I come for a different topic, maybe.
Yeah, maybe do that, thank you.
All right, well, let me just uh, say hello to you all, and I hope you all had a, a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Um, I know that we're um, you know, heading into uh, the holiday season with Christmas. And you know, just lots of things going on, I, I wish I had a little better report to give you, but. I will give it to you. So um, I start off usually with the numbers, in um, the county itself as a whole. We have uh, now cumulative cases, two thousand nine hundred and three. Hospitalized uh, cumulative count, two hundred and ten. We've had fifty-eight deaths. And uh, one thousand eight hundred and forty-four presumed recovered. Here in the city, we have a cumulative case, uh, positive case count of six hundred and sixty-three. Uh, actively, right now, today, we're following a hundred and fifty-two positive cases. Uh, we have a, a cumulative hospitalized count of fifty-four, currently we have ten patients in the hospital. Uh, deaths, we have a cumulative count of nine in the city, and sadly, this week, we, we lost three people. Um, quarantined orders that were sent out, a cumulative count of nine hundred and forty-one quarantine orders. And actively, we have sixty-five people under quarantine orders. Uh, it's been a busy week, um, November was just a horrendous month with lots of surging, lots of cases. Trending to see people sicker. Um, the hospitals are really beginning to fill up. Um, people that, that do go to the ER, they try very hard to treat them, send them home if at all possible. A lot of people are going back to the ER multiple times, because if it wasn't, if it wasn't. The situation we were in, they might even admit them, but we're trying, trying very hard to manage people at home. People that do get hospitalized, their stay is much longer. Um, we're seeing them staying longer, they're getting more aggressive treatment. Um, more people in the ICU, more people on vents. So uh, that, that is some of the things that do concern us. We are under a, you know, a stay-at-home advisory, or we're asking people, unless it's really necessary to go out. To, you know, to stay home and, and, and to be vigilant about following, um, you know, the safety orders. Um, this week, uh. We did have um, our wastewater treatment monitoring program did show an alert. And um, we've been, we've been keeping an eye on those uh, monitoring numbers. We recorded a sustained increase, a tenfold increase in the um, in the viral count. For um, eleven twenty-nine through twelve-one. So that's what they, that's what alerts them when they see that steady increase, and we know that that might be the harbinger of um, increased community spread. You know, and we know that's happening, we know it's going to, it's going to probably continue to happen. Some of our long-term care facilities are um, battling outbreaks as we speak. Um, you know, everybody's really stressed to the limit. We have uh, did, we did do a press release for the general public about the wastewater treatment plant and what that means. When that's um, trending up like that, and we've also notified our hospital partners, our partners in long-term care, our healthcare providers. Uh, daycares and so on, so that they also have a heads up, knowing that, you know, now's not the time to, to let, take your foot off the gas. Keep your masks on, keep your distance, sanitize your hands, sanitize surface, and, and, and just be very careful. Um, the other thing that happened this, this past week. CDC uh, released some updated guidance of, for quarantine. That guidance was considered and released also by the Ohio Department of Health. It gives a couple options for, for um, consideration for quarantining. However, the gold standard for quarantine is still fourteen days. And the health departments of Ashbula County, all three, Ashbula County Health Department, Ashbula City Health Department and Conyote Health Department. Feel very strongly that we will, we will remain uh, steadfast in our fourteen-day quarantine recommendations. The, the other recommendations are there and could case by case be applied, but it really would have to be a case by case basis and. You know, there's, there's just risk. When you let somebody out of quarantine before the, the fourteen-day incubation period. Um, there's risk, and you know, it, it, it's, can you tolerate that risk? What's the setting that you're letting that person go into with that risk? Um, so there's just a lot of things to consider, but we do have those, those tools now in our toolkit that we, we could um. We could take a look at, but in general, for the, for the public to know. Quarantine and isolation times have not changed, they, they remain the same. We, we have gotten uh, some updates on the COVID vaccine. Uh, we've been on quite a few calls the last, last few days, the Pfizer vaccine, which is the vaccine that is the ultra cold. Um, ACIP is meeting on the twelfth to consider that vaccine and, and give us firm recommendations. Ohio is going to follow the federal guidance as closely as it possibly can. Um, I. I have prepared. Our department to receive the Pfizer vaccine, but I highly doubt that we will get any of that ultra cold vaccine. If we do get it, we'll get it in small amounts, in dry ice, it'll have to be used in a very quick timeframe. Um, so I, I, I think that that ultra cold vaccine will be used um, by some of the bigger areas first, I think we'll be more likely. To get the Moderna, the, the next uh, manufacturer that's going to get approved, we're more likely to get that vaccine. Than we will the Pfizer, but we will see what happens. We do know that um, phase one A, the people uh, that uh, that would qualify, the first people. Are, it's becoming more and more clear who that will be. It will be healthcare providers that have direct patient contact. So that's also ancillary people, um, if you're a dietitian working in a hospital and you walk into patients' rooms. You know, and you have any kind of patient contact. Yeah, you know, in, in, in your capacity, in your job, you will be um, eligible to get the vaccine. Of course, our nursing homes, the skilled nursing home side, as well as the assisted living, part of the nursing homes will be eligible. And EMTs will be eligible. Um, and. You know, in Ohio, we've had a lot of uh, wonderful folks step up to be providers of vaccine. We have a hundred and seventy-one hospitals signed up to be providers. We have to date ninety, a hundred and ninety-one pharmacies that have stepped up to be providers. And a hundred and eight local health departments, including this local health department, who've stepped up to be a provider. Um, CVS and Walgreens are some of our big pharmacy players, they will be helping our long-term care facilities. Uh, get the vaccine out. So um, there's just a lot of moving parts and pieces, but it is starting to, to become clear, get, come in focus. And um, you know, we, we can start soon to make. Firmer plans, we've been sort of waiting for, for some firm guidance and it's starting to come. And you know, we do know that the vaccine will be a two-dose, um, a two-dose vaccine. Um, you know, we've been instructed to uh, give the first dose and not hold back a second dose, they will ship us. Uh, what we need for a second dose. Um, we've been reading a lot about um, how, in the trials, how people have done with the vaccine, people have done very well. Um, there has been some adverse reaction recorded with the second dose, mostly headaches. Uh, and some myalgias, some muscle pain, um, things that can be taken care of with, um, you know, over-the-counter pain medicine. Uh, a little rest, a little hydration, so um, you know, it, it does look very promising and we're, we're excited to have that glimmer of hope. And I think that that is all I really had to report. I'm, I'm open to, I know you have very long meeting tonight, so I'm open to any questions or comments or concerns.
I was just wondering, Ms. It, what, what the uh, what's the time span between the two doses?
Um, it, I think it depends on the manufacturer, it looks like it's about three weeks to four weeks apart.
Oh, okay, that long, huh? But Moderna's a two-dose?
Yeah, that, as far as I know, they're all two-dose.
Two-dose, huh? And, but, okay, very good.
And you don't, you can't mix and match, it'll be, if you received a Moderna as your first dose, you'll receive Moderna as your second dose.
Will, will our hospital be equipped with the uh, super cold freezers or whatever that they need, or?
Jim, I believe they do have that, I'm not positive on that one.
Uh, I believe it's our, it's a, it's the goal at ECMC to have uh, the capability to, to store the, the deep freeze, yes.
Oh, okay, oh, that's good to hear.
And I know a lot of the pharmacies, that's why they're great partners, they have that ability to store also, so.
Mr. President, that press release that uh, Ms. Hill spoke of about the wastewater treatment plant, I have already put that on the city's website. It's under the COVID uh. The COVID section under the health department, or there's a banner at the top of the website that also um, alerts you to the uh. The guidance of the stay-at-home that the county uh, has put into place, uh, you can just click on that, it'll take you to that page. And I do have a Facebook uh, scheduled to go out tomorrow, I did that because of our meetings tonight and not crowding up our Facebook, but um, those alerts will go out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Any, any other counselors have any questions or comments? Okay, well, Ms. Hill, thank you very much for staying late tonight and, and talking to the citizens and to us, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate you all too, thank you, have a good evening.
You too, have a good evening.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
All right, we will continue on with our, our, our meeting, uh, Ms. Senske, do you have minutes for us?
Yes, the Monday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting was held virtually and called to order. At seven oh four PM, the ward one counselor offered the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Ms. Harris, Ms. Haynes, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Young, Mr. Spielman and Mr. Roskovic. The officers present were Mr. Timmanier, Mr. Franklin, Ms. Welch and Ms. Senske.
Would somebody like to uh, move on the minutes?
Mrs. Foglio, so moved.
Somebody says.
Ms. Young seconds.
Ms. Foglio moved and Ms. Young second, Ms. Senske, would you call the roll?
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes. So the minutes will stand approved by a seven to zero vote. Mr. Timmanier, do you have uh, items to bring to council tonight?
Mr. President, I do, uh, first, I would like an ordinance to execute change order number one with Severino Construction here in Ashbula. For the purpose of making additional repairs and improvements to the, to Vision Place Pump Station. In the amount not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents. in the amount not to exceed $7,808.65. Funds for this expense will be taken from Fund 504.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Board One moves on the manager's recommendation.
Board Four seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves, Ms. Harris seconds. Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into agreement with the Ashtrabula County Public Defender, uh, here in Ashtrabula for the purpose of providing indigent defense services for a period of one year in the amount not to exceed $27,600. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 101.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Board, Board One moves on the manager's recommendation and this is money well spent.
Mr. President, Ward Two seconds.
Mr. Fog, Ms. Foglio moves, Mr. Crawford second. Any discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Ashtrabula County Board of Commissioners in Jefferson, Ohio for the purpose of providing emergency management resources for a period of two years in the amount not to exceed $3,924. Funds for this expense will be taken from Fund 101.
Mr. President? Board One moves on the manager's recommendation.
Board Five seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves, Ms. Haynes seconds. Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yeah.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
Uh, next, I would like an ordinance to file an application and execute contracts for round 35 funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission. Uh, this round of funding will be utilized to make capital improvements to Lake Avenue.
Mr. President, Ward One moves on the manager's recommendation.
Board Three seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves and Ms. Young seconds. Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Haynes?
Yeah.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Me? Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
Uh, next, and this goes along with the public hearing we had earlier today, I'd like an ordinance to approve zoning changes to four parcels of land located in the vicinity of Lake Avenue and West 17th Street, uh, to rezone those from C1 General Commercial to M1 Light Industrial, and these are the Lake City Plating properties.
Mr. President, Board One moves on the manager's recommendation.
Board Five seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves, Ms. Haynes seconds. Is there questions or comments? Said we had a hearing on this, so, uh, at 5:30. Seeing none, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
Lastly, I'd like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Refuge Equipment here in Ashtrabula, Ohio for the purpose of repairing a Mack truck, dump truck that we use down at Water Pollution in the amount not to exceed $20,611. Funds for this expense will be taken from Fund 504.
Mr. President, Board One moves on the manager's recommendation.
Board Four seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves and Ms. Harris seconds. Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
That's all the requests I have for ordinance, Mr. President. Um, just two general announcements, uh, maybe three here. Uh, first, our curbside pickup of leaf bags ended last week. So I know our guys are kind of going around just checking out and if they see any, um, trying to pick up the last remaining odds and ends, that doesn't mean rush out and put leaf bags out there now. Uh, if you have leaf bags, uh, pick them up, uh, going forward here. You can still always bring them down to the transfer station. Uh, but we pretty much have noticed, uh, you know, most, most people have already cleaned up their yards and all the leaves are down for the most part. So, uh, hopefully we won't have to, um, deal with that for the rest of the winter here. Secondly, the Planning Community Development Department, our code enforcement officers, specifically, uh, Mr. Lanham, uh, who also serves as our Animal Control Officer, uh, we've been going around for the last two to three weeks targeting junk vehicles. Uh, we define junk vehicles as inoperable vehicles anywhere on anyone's property. Uh, doesn't matter if it's parked, uh, correctly in the driveway, uh, or if it's parked in the tree lawn or on your front lawn or buried in the backyard. Um, we've been getting numerous reports of junk cars, uh, places. These cars are either inoperable, they're not tagged correctly or currently, um, flat tires, uh, all that fun stuff and just been around and buried in people's yards for a long time. In the last couple of weeks, uh, they, they have, uh, been able to tow quite a few, uh, and they will continue to do so. I believe it's a 72-hour notice, uh, and then we get you on the schedule to have it towed. So, uh, if you do have junk vehicles that are, uh, ruining, uh, other people's properties, including your own, uh, we please ask you to address them so we don't have to go through that hassle and you don't have to go through the hassle, uh, of having us there to remove cars. Um, we're also doing some other code enforcement, uh, steps, uh, you know, now that we're getting into the winter months and that we still are really not doing interior inspections unless it is a absolute necessity, uh, due to COVID. Um, and a lot of these are non-compliant and getting forwarded over to the solicitor's office for further charges, uh, and taken through the court system. So, uh, we're, we're tracking a lot of those that are going through the court system as well. Uh, Mr. President, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the manager? Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you have in your, uh, packet and on your agenda tonight, Resolution Number 2020-119, which deals with the renewal of the, uh, Parks and Recreational Levy. And, uh, there are some errors in my draft of that that need to be corrected. I would ask that, um, council move to amend, uh, the copy before you by interlineation, in the, uh, areas I, I will mention. And, uh, then with your permission, I will supply a, a clean copy to the clerk of counsel to, uh, go to the county for calculation of tax rates. Uh, in the first line of the, uh, title, it says a resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional one and a half mil tax. Uh, I would ask that that be amended by interlineation to read necessary to renew a one and a half mil tax. Also, the word additional in the last, uh, line of the, uh, title to the resolution should be stricken. In the third paragraph, starting whereas, in the third line, it says it is necessary to levy an additional tax. I would ask that that be amended by interlineation to read it is necessary to renew a tax. And finally, in Section 1, where it reads it is necessary to levy an additional ad valorem tax, I would ask that that be amended by interlineation to read it is necessary to renew an ad valorem tax. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Crawford and Mr. Timmonier for catching these. And, uh, uh, I believe that these changes, if council will permit them, will make the, uh, the process of getting this on the ballot much more straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Do we need a motion to do that or?
Yes, I would ask that, uh, if it would, if you would be so kind that, uh, council move to, uh, make the amendments by interlineation as recommended by the solicitor.
All right, do I have a motion for that?
Mr. President, Ward One makes that motion.
Ms. Foglio will move.
Ward Two will second.
Mr. Crawford will second. On, uh, changing the wording, any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
And Mr. Roskovich?
Yes. So we will change the wording on that by a seven to zero vote and vote on it, uh, tonight. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Ms. Welch, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I do. Um, first, I am formally requesting an ordinance to make supplemental increases and/or decreases to appropriations in the general police levy, food service, public works, public health, nursing, probation, court security, sanitation, coronavirus relief, housing code enforcement, permanent improvement, court special projects, water pollution and self-insurance funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Ashtrabula, State of Ohio for the period of January 1 through December 31st, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Can I have a motion to add that?
I'll move on the, uh, motion with the Finance Director.
Second, Ward, Ward Five seconds.
Motion by Mr. Crawford, a second by Ms. Haynes. We had that material. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, and we will add that by a seven to zero vote.
And secondly, I am formally requesting a resolution strongly opposing Senate Bill 352 and House Bill 754, legislation proposing the repeal of Section 29 of 197, which will result in a mirative unintended consequences through Ohio's entire municipal income check system, cause a substantial loss of revenue and will impede the ability of municipalities to provide for the health, safety and welfare of municipal residents and businesses and thereby jeopardizing the future economic growth of the state of Ohio.
Mr. President, Ward One moves on the Finance Director's recommendation.
Board Four seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves, Ms. Harris seconds. Please call the roll.
Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, and we will add that by a seven to zero vote.
That's all I have for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Ms. Sensky? Ms. Sensky, anything for us?
I, I finally got my Colin Powell book from the very first class that I took and it is, um, signed.
Oh, how cool.
I know it's backwards, but I'm really excited about it. And if anybody would like to borrow it, please let me know. I'm happy to share. Mr. Franklin, do I need to formally request that amended, um, resolution of necessity then? You're muted. There you go.
No, the, the resolution was requested. I, I asked council to amend the document before them by interlineation. They've, they voted to do so. They have not yet voted on the resolution as amended.
Okay, wanted to make sure we got that right. Other than that, uh, this month I took some time off, uh, from work a little bit and then also from my education, um, for the certification, just for one month, because I've already got January planned. But, um, I'm, I only need then 43 more points for my education cert, uh, and then I can be certified. Costs a little bit of money when that time comes. Either Ms. Welch or Mr. Timmonier will say, okay, you can go ahead and send that and, um, they'll, I'll be certified. Well, actually, I can't really be certified until September because they have the, um, the certification requirements, um, explained that it needs to be a two-year process in full, so I can't go early, I guess. That's it.
It looks like Ms. Welch is modifying the budget already.
Yeah. Everybody wants me to give them money.
Stacy.
Pardon?
I said, good job, Stacy.
Yes.
Go get her. We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. Um, so we will go on with our committee reports. Ms. Haynes?
So I, we will have a meeting tomorrow, December 8th via Zoom, 4 o'clock. I did want to make one notation. I, I, I assume it's not on the agenda because nobody wanted, i- it wasn't wanted to be voted on, but we did get a recommendation from Parks and Recreation for, um, the, the open position. It was Margaret Disler that they recommended. Also, Chris McCain has stepped down from that committee, which I believe that is a city manager recommendation. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Ms. Hay, uh, Ms. Haynes. Ms. Foglio, finance and personnel?
Yes, we are scheduled for a meeting on December 18th. Uh, we can do 8:30 if that's okay with Ms. Haynes. If, if the budget is.
I, I, I can do 8:30. I think I wrote, I marked off enough time. That'll work.
If, if the budget is on track and we don't really have anything to discuss, then it might be an early Christmas present.
Ms., uh, Mr. Crawford, you had a meeting? Do you have something to report or?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, we had our meeting on November 23rd and just, uh, a quick snapshot was, uh, Public Works, as City Manager has said, they are done with their leaf bag collections by, in the areas that ended on the week of the 30th of November. Uh, you can still drop those off at the transfer station if you need to, but also we're hoping all the leaves are gone and we won't have to worry about those until next year. The Public Works is all back, or actually the Sanitation Department is all back to full staff now, so they're all back. Uh, the road crews have been getting all the equipment ready. The salt storage sock pile had over 700 tons of road salt in there. Uh, it's estimated the city consumes about 2,500, uh, 3,000 tons each year of salt. So that's our first load to help start us getting through the winter. Uh, once plowing starts, like City Manager said earlier, they will be breaking and putting the crew on where they split so that they're able to maintain the roads throughout the whole 24 hours. So we think that may be coming up here shortly. Waste, uh, water, everything on the blower roof project should be starting soon, if not maybe already started. Not yet.
Not yet. With the snow last week, the materials are all there. They haven't started the roof yet.
We're hoping for that to come up soon, so that'll be done before winter sets in. And when we went to, uh, Trash Talks, which is our name for the trash talk for the city, the committee decided that they would like to present to all of council the Modifying Ordinance 951.03, which is Rates, Collections and Disposal. Uh, City Manager and his team worked on it and what we would like to do is have your consideration for making these changes. The change is wards three, four and five, which are the wards that do not have curbside recycling. They would be allowed to bring three 32-gallon trash cans to the road or the equivalent of nine bags. In the calculation of that, what it is, is wards one and two, which do have curbside pickup, they're allowed basically the same 96 gallons. They do 64 gallons of trash and we get 32 gallons because it's every two weeks. So it's the same amount of volume from wards one and two. By changing the wording, it's to allow wards three, four and five to not have that extra always being left in their property and not have to worry about it. So that's something we would like. So that's something we would like to have full council consider and go with that. Uh, also, we are also looking still at the option of possibly stickering if people had additional, but we're going to hold that off probably until the end of the first quarter to see how, if we go ahead and modify this ordinance, how that'll help the city, but that's something for future. And that's all we had. So I don't know exactly how I term it to actually bring this out for your full consideration. But I believe Mr. Timonier said he would talk to the city solicitor about modifying. So Jim?
Yeah, I think you just, just make a motion to, uh, have that ordinance drafted with the changes.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to have the ordinance drafted to reflect the changes in the volume that wards could churn in.
All right.
Ward five would like to, to, um, second that motion with a big thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to modify the trash pickup ordinance. Uh, the number was writ of, any other discussion? Let's hope this helps and, uh, and I, I think it will. Uh, please call the roll, Ms. Sinski.
Ms. Haynes?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskevics.
Yes, so that, uh, item will, we will request the solicitor draft an ordinance for our next meeting by a seven to zero vote. And I, that, that is, I, uh, share Jane's enthusiasm and Kelvin's hard work on that, uh. It's like government working, so that's always good.
Oh, I, I will not take all credit for that. That is also Ms. Young and Ms. Harris have worked on that too, along with Jim and sanitation department. They've done a great job. All of them working on that.
Thank you, Ms. Young, Ms. Harris, everybody, definitely. Um, Mr. Spielman, did you have a meeting or? I can't remember.
I did not. We're scheduled to meet Monday, December twenty-eighth at eight AM.
Okay, so there was no, uh, report.
Correct.
Thank you. And I think it was good. Was it, um, I think it wa- wasn't it in November, we passed an ordinance, uh, banning snow in the city? So last week when everybody got that snowstorm and we didn't. So that worked out well for us. So we'll have to do that again, I think. We'll take credit. All right, um, the formal legislation for tonight, uh, we have a, uh, the change order for Division Street pump station, uh, refuge equipment for the sanitation truck repair, repair, uh, defense, defender, uh, services with the Ashville County, the, uh, Public Defender's Office. Uh, resolution of necessity for the park levies, supplemental budget appropriations, uh, emergency management agreement with the county, a resolution opposing Senate Bill three fifty-two and House Bill seven fifty-four. Uh, uh, resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, the city manager to participate in the Public Works Commission program, try to get money for Lake Avenue paving. Uh, the zoning change for Lake City Plating on Lake Avenue. And then our last one will be, uh, the wastewater treatment plant truck repairs. Is it council's desire to handle those items in consent agenda format?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. And Ms. Young, you seconded that? Is that Ms. Young?
Ward one.
Oh, Ward one, Ms. Foglio, I'm sorry. Uh, any discussion on that? Ms. Sinski, will you call the roll on consent agenda?
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskevics.
Yes, so we will handle all these items by, uh, consent agenda. Ms. Sinski, will you read us the items?
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash one seventeen, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with refuse equipment and truck service for sanitation truck repairs. An ordinance, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty dash one eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Ashtria County Public Defender for the purpose of providing indigent defense services for one year. The amended resolution number twenty twenty one nineteen, a resolution declaring it necessary to renew a one and one-half mil tax for a period of five years for parks and recreational purposes and requesting the Ashtria County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city of Ashtria, Ashtria County, Ohio, and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by such a tax. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash one twenty, an ordinance to make supplemental increases and or decreases to appropriations in the general police levy, food service, public works, public health nursing, probation, court security, sanitation, coronavirus projects, no coronavirus relief, housing code enforcement, permanent improvement, court special projects, water pollution and self-insurance funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtria, Bula, state of Ohio for the period of January one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash one twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement between the Ashtria County Board of Commissioners, the city of Geneva and the city of Ashtria for the purpose of providing emergency management services for a period of two years. Resolution number twenty twenty dash one twenty-two, a resolution strongly opposing Senate Bill three hundred and fifty-two and House Bill seven fifty-four. Legislation proposing the repeal of section twenty-nine of one ninety-seven, which will result in a myriad of unintended consequences through Ohio's entire municipal income tax system. Cause a substantial loss of revenue that will impede the ability of the municipalities to provide for the health, safety and welfare of municipal residents and businesses and thereby jeopardize the future economic growth of the state of Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty dash one twenty-three, a resolution authorizing James Timonier, city manager of the city of Ashtria, Bula, Ohio, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash one twenty-four, an ordinance approving a zoning change of four parcels of land in the vicinity of Lake Avenue and West Seventeenth Street from C-one General Commercial to M-one Light and Industrial. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash one twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with refuse equipment and truck service for water pollution controlled Mack Dump Truck repairs.
Thank you, Ms. Sinski. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of all those legislation items?
Ward one moves.
Ward four seconds.
Ward one, uh, Ms. Foglio moves, Ms. Harris seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskevics.
Yes, so we will waive the reading of those items by a seven to zero vote. Do I have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
Ward one so moves.
Ward two seconds.
Ms. Foglio moves, Mr. Crawford seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskevics.
Yes, and one more time on passage?
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskevics.
Yes, so all those items have passed by a seven to zero vote. Thank you, Ms. Sinski for reading those, counsel. All right, I, you know what, counsel, I don't think we have to call roll call anymore times this evening. That'd be a good thing. All right, um, we'll go to our, uh, any new business? We have new business, Brickets Smokehouse, uh, is requesting a liquor permit. This would be Mr. Crawford's ward. Uh, Mr. Crawford, do you have any objections or?
No, I do not.
Still the need for a public hearing?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, so there's no, uh, need for a hearing on that? So that'll go on? And then we come to the time of the meeting for tell us something we don't know? Does anybody have anything this evening?
Yeah.
Quite a while. Octave, or Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I don't bring this up to counsel. Um, I try to keep it separate, but I did want to say that I have been, um, holding Zoom meetings regarding racial injustice and action steps. Um, and I will say that, um, they've been going really well. I'm having my last one in December. Um, on the third Thursday of December at six PM. And I just want to say that we have some really awesome community leaders, community residents, um, that have been attending. We had guest speaker Jonathan Lee from Signature Health at the last meeting, um, Derek Tolls from Inspiring Minds. These are like really awesome organizations if you're not familiar with them. And, um, those speakers, in addition to residents and leaders of the community, Ashtria County, surrounding counties, um, have been sharing and networking with one another, have been, um, discussing ways that they can come together to make our community stronger, um, especially with racial diversity. And so at this last meeting, it's going to be focused strictly on networking, um, discussing ideas to strengthen the community and discussing things that have already been working in the community. And I thought that you guys should know, um, as well as those who are watching, because it's just really awesome to see the community come together um, and unite for diversity, um, inequality.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Um, anything else? Any other counselors? Okay, Ms. Sinski, do we have any communications from the public that need to be read or discussed?
I did not, but I had something, tell you something you don't know. I think it's next Thursday, December tenth is the PBS, um, show. Mr. Timonier?
Yeah, Mr. President, I couldn't get my computer off mute fast enough, but I do have two items for the tell us something we don't know. Uh, first off is just that from Ms. Sinski, um, the Our Town, uh, story from Ashtria, uh, done by WQLN, uh, it will be on the local PBS station, uh, on December tenth. Um, it starts at eight PM. If you don't get it, uh, if you have like DirecTV or one of the, or you stream, um, you can actually go to WQLN.org and they'll be streaming it there as well. Um, thank you to my mother for texting that to me to make sure I brought it up tonight. Um, and secondly, I don't know if, uh, many of you saw in the paper the other day, um, they have started work down at the Petman site. Uh, Larry Lorello from Delta Railroad had gotten ahold of me, uh, one of the mornings were taking out track. And they found track that was stamped in nineteen eighteen, uh, that's when it was produced, uh, that was, that was on that property. And he, of course, put the significance together, um, which, you know, in nineteen eighteen, that was the height of the steel, uh, industry. And there was also a pandemic going on. And how interesting it is that in twenty twenty, here we are with another pandemic going on. And we're seeing the rebirth of the steel industry with Petman here and, uh, here in Ashtria. So really, really interesting and very perceptive on his part to, to point that out. Uh, so as you guys have seen, the, the Petman project has begun, the earthwork has begun on the property. And, uh, Perk, who is doing the road improvements, uh, man, they are just flying through that process, uh, most of which it is done. I think we're just working on the concrete areas right now, but it's really come out nice. Um, we hope to be all wrapped up by the end of the month here. Uh, we got our first pay application, uh, for that project. And of course, we're doing the dance with how much comes out of us, how much comes out of local share, uh, how much is coming from the grants? So getting all that organized here and that again plays into why the budget might change as we, as we move forward here, how much money we get back and when from the grants and how much we have to put out. So, uh, things are moving along quickly. Uh, and we're looking forward to, uh, even more work down there. Hopefully this weather holds off at least the snow so they can continue earthwork. Um, and then get into full construction next spring.
Thank you, Mr. Timonier. What, what channel is, uh, on the spectrum? What channel would be QLN?
I don't- Whatever the, whatever the PBS station is, I'm sorry, I, I don't have Spectrum, so I'm not sure.
Oh, I know Channel two is the Cleveland PBS, but I don't know which one is eerie. I'll have to look. Okay.
It might be on the same, it might be the same one. I, I'm not positive, but if you can't find it on Spectrum, again, WQLN.org, they will stream it there.
Stream it there, okay. Anybody else have anything to add this evening? I know we've been at it quite a while. Seeing nothing, um, we will wish everybody a, a, a good week. Stay safe, please. Uh, wear your mask and, uh, uh, and do all those good things we need to. So, uh, everybody have a good week. We'll call the meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Well, good night.